And I believe we do have enough of us. So in accordance with Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. And you can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. And so, Ryan, can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Bass?
Here.
Supervisor Bone?
Jim Ford.
Supervisor Madron?
Here.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Here.
All right. So with that, we will move on to our flag salute. And so, Ryan, I'd like for you to get the flag up. I think. Maybe? Well.
Yeah, I'm having some, it looks like some network.
Here, I've got one right here. Hold on. I've got a flag right here. I'll try to hold it in. I can't get it on the screen. All right.
It's my flag.
We'll make do. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Supervisor Bone for that flag. Backly. All right. So for those of you who are on the call today and wish to make public comment, just a heads up that when you're interested in talking, press star nine, which will raise your hand. We will call your number and then press star six to unmute your phone. You will have three minutes to speak. At two and a half minutes, there is a time, you'll hear a tone, and that tells you that you have thirty seconds left in your comments. And when your three minutes are over, your time will be added and closed as well. So don't take it personally if you don't get to say everything you wanted to. We just want to be consistent with everyone. So at this time, I'll go on to the public comment on non-agenda items and look to see if we have anyone. If you were wanting to comment under that category, please do press star nine. All right, we have three attendees and I do not see any hands up. Ryan, do you either? No hands up?
I don't see anyone either.
All right. So then at this point, we will not take public comment on items not on the agenda. I mean, there's no one that's interested in making those comments. So we'll go back to the board and we will now go on with our public hearing for the day, which is the proposed county budget for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And it comes to us from the County Administrative Office. So at this time, I'm opening the public hearing and I'd like to turn this to staff, just turn to staff for a report.
Thank you Chair Bass. Again, I just want to take a moment to thank county departments for their participation in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget process. This is the culmination of a significant amount of work. And again, I want to thank the management and budget team at the County Administrative Office for all of their hard work and their most excellent efforts in putting this budget together. And with that, I will turn this over to Assistant CAO Alicia Hayes to give you a staff presentation.
Good afternoon Chair Bass and members of the board. Give me just one moment to share my presentation. Got it, got it there? Is it showing the presentation? Okay, fabulous. Thank you. So today I come before your board for the fiscal year twenty-two-one, twenty-two budget hearings. These are the opportunity for the public to participate in the budget process and for your board to deliberate on any potential changes. Following today's meeting at one-thirty, your board will continue this hearing to five-thirty PM this evening where you will hear additional testimony and make your final deliberations. The adopted budget will then return to your board on June twenty-ninth with any of the requested changes that come from today's public hearings. As always, I'd like to take a moment to brag about my management and budget team and all of the county staff who have worked to put together this budget as this year we did for the second time in a row, received the distinguished budget presentation award. This budget identifies our document as a somewhat blurry and is a reflection on the monumental amount of work that has gone into this budget document. And I am incredibly proud of the staff who have contributed to that. Today, the total proposed budget or spending plan before your board for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is five-hundred-and-five-point-six-three million. The total proposed budget represents an increase of forty-point-one million or nine percent more than the budget your board adopted for the current fiscal year twenty-two-one. Significant portion of this increase is due to large projects that will take place to address prior year storm damage and for planning and construction of the Manila and Humboldt Bay Trails. Overall, the largest portion of the budget is allocated to Health and Human Services, with Public Works and Law and Justice coming in second and third. In the general fund, projected revenues for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two are one-hundred-and-forty-eight-point-six million, which is an increase of one-point-seven million or one percent from the current fiscal year. This revenue increase is primarily due to increased building permit fees, property and sales tax. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the general fund will utilize six-point-eight million dollars in the use of, in other financing sources, which includes two-point-two million dollars in the use of fund balance in order to present to your board a balanced budget. Over half, or eighty-nine-point-five million of the total general fund revenues, which includes twelve-point-five million in Measure Z funding, is available to be spent on your board's priorities and projects. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the budget proposes that your board allocate one-hundred-and-fifty-five-point-five million in general fund expenditures. This represents a decrease of one-point-four million or one percent over the current fiscal year. This decrease is primarily due to the completion of large projects and the reclassification of expenditures to other financing uses. The fiscal year twenty-two-one budget was adopted with an estimated nine-point-four-seven million in Measure Z revenues and expenditures. And in March, staff increased that projection to just over eleven million. Since March, Measure Z has continued to substantially exceed even revised projections. Due to this positive news, staff recommends that your board allocate an additional one-point-six-two-two million in unanticipated funds to Measure Z requests. As fiscal year twenty-two-one has nearly ended, staff is recommending that your board apply these additional funds to applications received for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. As a reminder, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Measure Z Funding in April submitted to your board a ranked list of all applications received from the community. Some of those applications were reduced during the ranking process, including the Public Works application that was reduced from two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in order to free up funds for other projects. Your board already allocated twelve-point-five million in projects and ongoing staffing costs and new applications. Attached to today's board report is a copy of the Citizens Advisory Committee Letter of Recommendations. Also attached is a list of the remaining projects that have yet to be funded as ranked by the committee, as well as previously unfunded portions of applications. The recommendation contained in today includes the allocation of an additional one-point-six million, which would use up all the estimated fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two revenues and additional revenue from fiscal year twenty-two-one, leaving roughly twenty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars in fund balance and available to allocate at a later date. Detailed on this slide are all of the unfunded applications. Contained on the next slide are all the applications that were awarded reduced funding. Finally, the City of Trinidad requested funding in the amount of seventy-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eight dollars for the addition of a one-half-time deputy. The sheriff has indicated a challenge with filling an additional position. Thus, this request was removed from the items detailed in the attachments as potentials for funding. The City of Trinidad is asking for these funds to be considered for allocation to fund their current position. Approval of this request will not enhance deputy services, but will free up those dollars for the City of Trinidad to utilize for other purposes. In order to fund this request, your board would need to utilize unallocated funds totaling twenty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-seven and reduce one of the recommended allocations contained in the attachments included with today's board report. In addition, the Humboldt County Deputy Sheriff's Organization has sent a letter to the Citizens Advisory Committee requesting that Measure Z funds be utilized for the recruitment and retention of qualified public safety professionals. There are communications that would need to take place with the union and the Citizens Advisory Committee, but I didn't want to put this on your board's radar. Each year during budget development, departments have an opportunity to present requests for additional money from the general fund. Departments and outside agencies submitted nearly eight million dollars in additional funding requests, which included two million for ongoing requests, as detailed on this slide. In addition, five-point-seven million in one-time requests have also been received. The CAO is recommending five-point-three million in funding requests, primarily for one-time requests as detailed in the attachments included with today's board report. In addition to the funding requests received through the budget process, staff continued to receive requests from outside agencies. Due to deadlines and preparing the proposed budget documents, these are not included in the budget, but are available for your board to consider. These requests include three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eight dollars for the law library to purchase annotated California codes, fifteen-thousand-six-hundred dollars for the grand jury to utilize the Eureka veterans as a meeting location, two-hundred-thousand dollars for Lou Edwards to conduct polling to prepare for three ballot measures to be placed on the twenty-two-two ballot, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for probation to address water damage that occurred during the construction of the juvenile hall facility, four-hundred-thousand in potential ARPA funds for the North Humboldt Recreation and Park District, also known as the Arcata Community Pool, and six million in financial assistance for the Harbor District to develop a new multipurpose marine terminal. Since the proposed budget was presented to your board, the following requests have also been received. Six-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau to competitively engage the full spectrum of public relations and marketing programs and services to ensure a robust future for Humboldt County's tourism industry. This could potentially be funded through ARPA. One-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the Humboldt County Office of Emergency Services to purchase a Zone Haven evacuation management platform and community evacuation interface. Securing funding for this purchase will reduce long-term costs of this program and result in significant savings. Three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for planning and building to replace carpet throughout the department, complete restroom upgrades, replace windows and paint throughout the office at the Clark Street Facility. Funding for this request could be made available through a previous allocation of one million dollars that your board made in December tenth of two thousand and nineteen to establish one-stop permitting. And finally, seventy-two-thousand dollars for social services for, to forgive general relief clients' debt for the period of time they could not work. Funding for this request could also be made through ARPA. And this request was also reduced down to fifty-three-thousand, I believe it is. And that information is all contained in today's board report as an attachment. With that, I will conclude the staff report and provide time for your board to deliberate and continue the public hearings to five-thirty PM.
All right. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Sorry. So are there any questions for Alicia right now? Before we open it up to department heads?
Wait.
Yes, Rex? Supervisor Bone?
When the department heads, and I know I brought this up once before, but if we end up with, without much of a change in our population, like less than one percent or way less than one percent spread out throughout the county, do we actually have to change lines? Do we change lines? Do we need to spend hundred thousand dollars for three or four hundred people? And what is the, what is the level of outreach if we don't change it?
No, you're referring to redistricting, correct?
Uh, number, yeah, three, under the hundred thousand dollars to, for an expert to assist with redistricting following the twenty-twenty census.
Yeah, so the redistricting is mandated by legislation to occur. It must consist of four public meetings to gain public input and to evaluate the new mapping strategies. We currently have, are in the processes of consulting, contracting with a consultant to conduct that work. And that quote came in just under fifty thousand dollars. So we do have, at this point in time, fifty thousand dollars in savings. However, we are exploring the option to contract out the work and the management of the redistricting that will take place to CCRP in order to free up taxed staffing time.
All right, I'm just, we may not change anything though, is what I'm saying.
Correct, but it is still mandated by legislation that we follow through the process.
Okay.
Alicia, my question along those lines were, my understanding is this is a very different, different redistricting strategy than we used to get. And it is, it is more consultant-heavy, I think. But I don't know what the changes were that they made, but it is, I think, more complicated. I don't know why, but.
This is my first redistricting to go through. I'm looking to see if maybe Kelly Sanders is on the line, but I don't see her. Amy, do you have anything to add?
I am here, actually.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I did a presentation back in March on the, the changes in the redistricting process. It used to be that myself, the assessor and the district attorney could draw the lines. That's completely changed. And you have to go out to form some sort of a committee. There's three different types of committees that you can form. Because of the condensed timeframe, I had recommended that a consultant be hired to handle the redistricting process. There's an extreme amount of community involvement that's done. It's not just making a mere adjustment to the existing lines. It could change the entire outlook of the supervisory districts as we now know them. It's, it's more aligned now to the way the state does their redistricting. So it is a completely new process. And I really felt that this time around, a consultant should be hired to make sure that the county was guided through the process so that we don't have any mistakes, we don't have any potential for lawsuits.
Right. Thank you for that. All right, any other questions for Alicia from staff right now?
I just have a quick question about the ARPA, if I can, through the chair.
Sure.
So we're, we're gonna be, I mean, to receive the ARPA money. And so, do we consider that, it's kind of like Measure Z money in terms of like, it's, it's a set amount of money that we'll, that we'll be receiving from the, from the federal government and maybe from, not from the state, though. And then, then we allocate that to not just ourselves in terms of activities that are applicable, but also to other government, government agencies that we have some fiscal connections to. Is that how it works?
That is pretty close to how it works, correct. The thirteen million has been received. It came in last week or maybe the week before. I'm working with the auditor controller to establish a separate budget unit for those funds so that we can segregate them from CARESAC dollars. Once that's been established, then we can return to your board to propose budget allocations. And there are some, you know, fairly strict requirements that come from the Department of Treasury and how we can spend those funds. We will help guide your board through that. However, it can go, the funds can be spent internally or you can allocate them to external entities that have been impacted by COVID.
Through the chair, just, is there an expectation that internally we'll have more allocations than we've received money for? Or is there, do we have any understanding of that?
When we were, when we came to your board with the proposed budget, we did recommend an initial spending plan. And that spending plan allocated the vast majority of the funds to outside agencies. Sean, you might be able to remind me of those. I think it was sixty-five percent to outside agencies, twenty-five percent to roads, who was significantly impacted by reduced gas tax revenues, and the remaining fifteen percent to contingencies. That is, of course, just an initial proposed spending plan and, you know, is subject to your board's discretion.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate the reminder. Thanks.
Ryan, any other questions at this time? Oh, yes Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So I appreciate the consideration of the Trinidad proposal on the Measure Z stuff. But I'm just curious, I mean, the way it was presented was, in order to fund that, we'd have to figure out where to cut funds somewhere else in Z. But in all fairness, shouldn't they all be ranked equally? Or at the very least, I mean, Trinidad was a couple of numbers up in the priority list from some of the others, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar one and some of the others. And so, I would think that it would just simply be part of the list that we're wanting to fund with those extra dollars. And then we need to figure out how to cut in order to fund them all. But I don't think it would be appropriate to just hold Trinidad's proposal out separate and fund everything else and then say, we're gonna fund Trinidad if we can figure out where to cut the others? I mean, why would we separate that out?
Well, Trinidad did modify their proposal a little bit from what was presented to the Citizens Advisory Committee. So, so that does make their request a bit of an anomaly through this process because it hasn't been thoroughly reviewed and evaluated by the committee. So I would not be comfortable placing a rank on it because that is the work of the committee.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay. And I'm curious, well, any other supervisors? Before I ask department heads if they had any thing they wanted to share? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I have a question about Measure Z. And I mentioned this before with relationship to the, to the stoplight that's proposed for Oak and F, which I think is something that we've had some discussion about a little bit. But the other part about this is, you know, when, when, I was just wondering, is the community having any input? And what I mean by that is like, is there any financial connectivity? Because, I mean, every, in, whenever we're requesting like a, a speed table or some other method in other communities, you know, we're, we're asking for donations and we're getting stuff, you know, from Ursula Fraser and other great folks. And I was just kind of wondering, did, did any of that happen with this? Or is this just because, I was just wondering where, if there was any contributions associated with this? And it looks like Rex might have the answer.
Yes. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and this is a little bit different from a speed bump because it's written up in our policy, speed bumps have to be paid for by the people that are requesting them. This intersection at Oak and F has, has exceeded the accident quotient to make an adjustment of some sort to, it's had too many accidents in the timeframe allowed. And it, and it's come up to that level because of what's happened on Broadway and the diversion of traffic. And with that, there was a very active community group that went out and they went out and got funding for signs and, and, you know, trying to slow it down. And I got a bumper sticker somewhere here and everything else. And you had said about, you know, is there a traffic study for that road before we do that? Well, the issue being is F Street, the county part of F Street, is a highly rated road and probably could handle more. It necks down quite a bit when you get into the city of Eureka just before Handy Market and stuff. So that's where a little of this bottleneck happens. So this isn't a, a speed bump for convenience for the neighbors. A majority of the people involved in the accidents there don't even live in the district out there. They're commuters from Forte. They're, they're getting the Arcata, they're taking the shortcut, basically. That's the avoid the street light shortcut. But on, on the, on the speed bumps, they have to be paid for by the citizens. What we do is we reach out to people to see what they can donate to the fact to help get that process through. We did it on Holly, we did it up there at Hiller Park. So that's where that comes in as far as donations. But we're not actually, we, we put a street light in that started about fourteen years ago, about three years ago, on Walnut and Fern. And Jimmy Smith had started it in two thousand and three or four. And it took almost twelve years to get the funding together. But that was more because of the safety there, too.
Appreciate that. I, I will, and through the chair, I will note that like, in freshwater, I mean, the initial conversation started from that, from, you know, a young person dying from being hit, you know? So this, I'm just saying that, you know, that, and then it, it just seems that, it seems like something so, so big that then we, we have a different process. And it just seems like it would be in the future, you know, when people, when, when communities are asking for safety amendments, you know, especially when these roads are facilitating such unsafe and, and speeds and, and quite frankly, the, the technology of trucks these days or large vehicles is just, they just go so much faster and they feel so much safer from the inside that it's really impacting these communities. And, and so I just would, you know, hopefully, we just don't have to always be begging to try and slow traffic down in the smallest ways where in kind of the larger ways we're funding, so. And I appreciate the, the slow the F down bumper sticker, which is, by the way, the, one of the coolest campaigns to slow down a street. And I really appreciate that. And I don't want to belabor this anymore. I do, I, I appreciate our discussion. And I, I'm, you know, I approve of us, you know, approving this. And we have a bunch of other stuff. So I, I just wanted to make sure that in the future we have some more discussion about smaller items that we can do to make our neighborhoods safer through Measure Z. That's all.
And Director Mattson's on here, so.
That's, yes, thank you Supervisor Chair. I was gonna ask Director Mattson if he wanted to weigh in on that or share some information.
Yeah, I would just want to reiterate that it did meet the crash warrants under the, the standards of the state of California. And it is, you know, on us to, to solve that problem. You know, there's many other things that we do do in other communities with Measure Z, the speed feedback signs, some of the other things that we've done. So this, this is just, you know, one safety concern at one location countywide. And we're constantly looking at safety on all the county roads with very limited resources. And, you know, realistically, this is a very expensive fix, but it's the right fix for this location. So I'll just leave it at that.
Through the chair, I appreciate Director Mattson's input. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this moment or this time, Director? And we may have a, well, first we'll go through the department heads. Any department heads wish to comment before we go to public comment? Any others? No, Director Ford, I do see your hand up.
Thank you Chair Bass. Good afternoon. John Ford with Planning and Building. I don't completely know what happened, but Attachment eleven refers to planning additional requests for general fund appropriations. That's not something we're asking for this year. That was something we asked for last year and it was not approved. And I, I don't know what happened here, but I feel kind of awkward about that. So I, I don't want the board to have to belabor that. The only other comment I wanted to make, and I understand the rationale for it not being supported, was that we did ask for two code enforcement officer positions to handle traditional cases that due to the fact that they're ongoing budget items, they're not being supported. I get that. I support what the CAO's office attempts to do to balance the overall budget needs with the demands. But I just do want you to be aware that, as we mentioned in our report on code enforcement, we are getting more cases coming in every week than we're capable of, able to respond to. Thank you.
All right, thank you Director Ford. Sheriff?
Thank you Chair Bass. Appreciate the, the time and opportunity to speak to the board regarding our budgets and, and where we are this year. You know, it's obviously been a tough year. And I know that the sheriff's office and public safety in general takes up a lot of the general fund budget. But our job continues to be a very difficult one as we kind of navigate this. And this year, without receiving an increase in our general fund allocations, difficult. We have to, you know, cut back some programs and, but I appreciate the fact that we do have some one-time monies that we're trying to offset that with. And, and then also that there is a surplus in Measure Z to fund some of those other positions. The, the key thing here, body worn cameras being funded through, through Measure Z. And, and that is something that's gonna be very, very crucial for the sheriff's office moving forward and allocating those two positions so we can make sure this program is successful moving forward. That is key. And also our dispatch services. Increasing dispatch services so we can look at potentially consolidation in the future is something that this board has always been concerned with. And, and I'm, again, And, and I'm, uh, again, uh, having the staff allocated will definitely benefit that. I do want to point out that there was some, some positions that weren't recommended to be funded. Two of those positions were correctional deputy positions in our correctional facility. These had to do with mental health. And as you all know, mental health is only becoming more and more of a problem here in the county, not only at SV, but at St. Joe's, but also our correctional facility. Mental health and the amount of mental health cases within our correctional facility has increased. And in our secured housing unit where our, um, where we house some of our mentally ill offenders, it has become very, very difficult for one correctional deputy to manage. And so that's the, the reason why we need additional correctional deputies in there. Because it really is a two correctional deputy job now to manage the, uh, the people in that facility. So it's something that I definitely want you all to consider and just put on your radar in the future. Also something that I think the board should be very interested in is the, um, the Zone Haven evacuation management platform. So it's a part of potential funding for federal, federal funding here. And, uh, and I think it's something that this board should definitely consider. It's $150,000. But what it does, it creates a, a platform within our county so we can, so the sheriff's office, office emergency services, um, public works, as well as all fire services can work off the same evacuation maps. And it provides countywide evacuation mapping. It can, but it provides an app tool for the, um, public to utilize emergency messaging to dovetail in with our, our Everbridge Hubble Alert system. But also it creates an avenue so we can, um, pull in evacuation zones that CAL FIRE uses. And it's going to be something that, uh, they have extensive data that they can use for us to, to provide the best and accurate zones for the county. Alameda County just went to this last year when we had the Red Salmon Complex. The Hoopa Tribe went to Zone Haven and created evacuation zones for their area. A lot of the counties are utilizing this. And so it's something that I believe that would be beneficial for our entire county to utilize and for us to, um, to, 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 to go about and, and get this system for our county. So, and I'm here to answer any questions as far as some of the other things that may be on the table, but, uh, but I really appreciate the time of the board today.
Thank you, Chair Hansel. And we will definitely probably have some questions. So I have Director Mattson and then Director Brenneman.
Yes, I would, I'm just asking you to keep high in your consideration for the Recovery Act funds, the, the recommended funding to public works for roads. It's not only did we have decreased revenue with the decreased, uh, fuel usage, we're trying to put out $30 million in, in about $30 million in storm damage projects this year, this upcoming fiscal year. And our match on that is a little over 11%. So that, you know, comes, that's well over $3 million that we're going to have to put out of our, our, our revenue to leverage the federal funds. And if we don't do it, we don't get the federal funds, we don't do the projects. So we are in a conundrum where we need that, that money to do our storm damage repairs as well as our basic maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mattson. Director Brenneman or Chief Brenneman, Sean?
Thank you, Chair. I, yeah, I just wanted to throw my pitch in here for the probation department. You know, we've been going, you're going this construction project that is, I think the wording terminal might be appropriate. My hope was that this fiscal year that we would be able to address some of the issues that came up. However, due to delays, um, we're, you know, it's going to have to go into the new fiscal year. So we're asking to have some rollover of some of our general fund from last year, which we have, we're going to turn back the county in the form of salary savings and be able to basically put a pin in it to address some unintended issues around the floor in the main probation department. Last fall, they were working on the roof and they had it torn off. And then we had a rain event and it got through both holes of the floor of the building, which, um, the public works had eventually found asbestos in there. So there's going to be an abatement issue, which is going to raise the cost of that. So I just wanted to put that there that we had salary savings this year and we're looking to roll that over the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Director Dahl, do you have anything you wanted to add? I just see your, see you there.
Um, no, not at this time. Thank you, Chair Bass. I appreciate the opportunity, though.
And any other directors, Director Beck? I'm just going to start calling people. I see their names. Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Bass. I'm Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I just want to thank Supervisor Wilson for, um, uh, asking for the general relief debt to be placed on the agenda and, um, possibly funded by the ARPA funds. Want me to go into a little bit of detail about it because I can?
Through the chair, I would like to hear that.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, we had several programs, mandated programs that we have in Health and Human Services, um, that we didn't actually count the stimulus payments. Oh, my goodness, hold on one second. So several of our mandated programs, we didn't have to, um, count the stimulus payments. An individual brought, um, to our attention that, um, we were, uh, counting those incentive payments as part of the income for general relief. Supervisor Wilson asked for us to look into it. And sure enough, there would be about, we have now, we, we had originally estimated 72,000, but now we know it's closer to 53. So we were planning on bringing an agenda item to the board, um, I think next week. And then it ended up being in, in this budget, um, package instead. So I just really appreciate it, much needed. We have about 78 clients that are currently on our general relief client, uh, program. And, um, uh, any way possible that we can get them, um, back to work and not, and, and having them utilize the incentive payments as they need to, I just really appreciate it. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Beck. District Attorney Fleming, would you like to make a comment? Like I said, I'm just saying names to make sure everyone gets a chance if they want to from the.
Well, thank you, Chair Bass. I appreciate that. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you so much, the board, for all the tremendous work and effort funding our fifth floor renovation. Everybody's up there, it's going very well. We're still fine tuning some of the sound issues that we have in the cast office, but otherwise it's really nice for them to have a safe place. Uh, the Measure Z application for EVAST, um, after it was submitted, we recognize in the Measure Z committee, I addressed them on this, the 222,000 was for the total funding, but that's, that's not new because that is actually for the positions. It was only an $8,000 request for professional development. Coming out of COVID, we hope to be out in the public trying to help people work in banks or in other sort of places like that where they might come across people who are being abused or taken advantage of, sort of some of the risk factors. So that was funding requests to help us with that, with travel costs, those sorts of things. Other than that, I'm available if there's any questions or concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see. So I see Mara Wilsons, do you have something as accessory you'd like to add?
I don't have any comments. Thanks for asking.
All right. And do you see the auditor controller, Karen Paz Dominguez? Did you have something for the, as a department head to add to the conversation? Where'd you go? There you are.
Thank you, Chair Bass, for the opportunity. At this time, no, I'm here to observe and listen. And if anyone does have any questions, I'm here to collect those, too. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. I'll ask, uh, Treasury Tax Collector Bartholomew, anything you wanted to add at this time?
Chair Bass, thank you very much. But no, I have no comments. I just wanted to be here for the conversation in case something comes out pertinent to this department. Thank you.
All right. Well, if you happen to be a department head that I have not called yet and you want to make a comment, please do just press star nine so I know you want to make a comment. Or, um, press the little raise the hand button. I do know we have at least one person in here who represents, um, an agency that is requesting a significant, uh, potential funding. So I did want to, um, want to welcome Executive Director Larry Otter from the Harbor District, now that he's actually on. Larry, would you like to provide some background information, et cetera, on what's in our packet regarding the Harbor District?
I'm here if you want to. Is it my time?
Well, yeah, if you want to kind of, I mean, obviously it's a, it was a large request. So it's, you know, I figured you may want to shed a little bit of light on, on reasoning and, you know, just, uh, on the public record, be able to kind of have that conversation so people can ask. Or maybe you could just wait to see, does anyone have questions for you? But.
Well, if, if I could possibly give a, a short presentation, that would be great.
I mean, I think that's all right. I'll ask our CIO, I mean, not CIO, our CIO Hayes, is that, you know, Alicia?
Yes.
We're okay with that since it is part of our.
Yes, we were anticipating that, given the magnitude of this request.
All right. So I get, that's a yes, Larry. So do you have a, oh, you do. Okay.
Okay, so, um, I'm assuming you can see that. And so we're basically preparing California's, uh, new offshore wind port and we're working on revitalizing Humboldt's economy. That's a big, it's a big task, uh, but we're making really good progress on this. I'm going to quickly go through this. And so what are we asking? In the first place, we want to know is, does the board of supervisors want to partner with the Harbor District to establish a west coast hub for the offshore wind industry and revitalize the small peninsula? That's really is the first part of the question because obviously if you don't want to partner with this, then there's no reason to ask the second part. Then the second part of the question is, will the board invest $6 million to develop a new heavy lift terminal? What we're asking the board to do is to commit by resolution, uh, by July 21st of the funding. And then to do an MOU with the Harbor District, which would outline the specific terms, whether it was a loan, a grant, you know, conditional funding, whatever the case may be, you know, by approximately September 30th, 2021. And then the Harbor District then would expend the funds by 2025. And so it's not like something we need to check tomorrow. You know, as you well know, is that we're working on building a new multipurpose dock, sea level rise, energy, 12-month port strategy. You know, there's all kinds of, uh, port infrastructure that's happening here. And so we really went in and looked and said, you know, the town of Samoa is completed. There's broadband fiber optics that's in here, the new terminal, uh, that we're looking to develop, the Nordic AquaFerns project and the Fairhaven project. This has the potential to bring in approximately $50 million of new tax, uh, money to the county's copper over the next few years. And the coastal act says that the Port of Humboldt Bay is supposed to modernize. That's really what we're supposed to do. And as you well know, there's a call area 30 miles directly offshore of Humboldt. And then what would happen is these wind turbines would be offshore, electrical cables, and then there'd be a new landing that would take place, most likely at the PG&E power plant on Fairhaven. And so these turbines are huge. They're getting bigger and bigger and bigger over time. And in 2021, you know, that they're about 853 feet tall. This is the Golden Gate Bridge in the background. You cannot get them under the Golden Gate Bridge. You can't get them under the Coronado Bridge. You couldn't get them under the Coos Bay, uh, bridges. And they're just going to get bigger over time. They're projecting to get bigger and bigger. And Humboldt doesn't have any overhead obstructions, deep water ports, et cetera. And we've looked at ports all over the world. I've talked to every one of these ports. I was talking to France this morning. We regularly talk to, uh, you know, our partners in, in Norway, et cetera. The Port Director of New Bedford, Massachusetts. This is happening all over the world right now. This is last week. This is a floating foundation out of China that they just launched. And so we're, we're saying, oh, floating is just theoretical. It's real. It's here. This platform was just last week, um, in, in China. And so then what happens is they, they assemble these in port and then this is a submersible barge. So they would gently push it over onto the barge and then this barge would sink. They would basically sink the barge until the, the yellow, uh, floating platform would be buoyant. And then they would tow the, the yellow platform away and then raise the barge back up. And then they would begin the assembly process. In addition to the floating foundations, they also need to do, this is an electrical substation. Basically, they would manufacture the electrical substation in port and then, uh, you know, these would be full of transformers and other things and then tow them out in there. Here's a rendering of Redwood Marine Terminal One directly behind the Samoa Cookhouse, where they would, uh, assemble these platforms, put out large crane, and they would be fully erect, uh, in the port. We've looked at Brussels, France, I'm sorry, this is, uh, Port of Rotterdam, Netherlands. And what this is, is a tower manufacturing facility. And why this is important is this building and this facility, we looked at this one and could we do something like this in Humboldt? And then on April 20th, they announced the, the construction of America's largest offshore wind hub in, uh, New Jersey. And this is it. And it's under construction right now. And so we looked at these plans and said, could we do this in Humboldt? And this is really where we came up with this conceptual master plan. This is basically the assembly portion where they would assemble it and then offload it onto the dock. They would, uh, ships would be able to come and on and offload the parts. This is that exact same building that was in Rotterdam, Netherlands and that they were proposing to construct in New Jersey, a tower manufacturing facility that shows that you could, you could do the manufacturing facility and then go directly to the assembly ports. And so, but what we're really focusing on right now is disassembly. If we could, the industry needs disassembly and that's what we want to develop. And so basically, the governor's May budget appropriated $20 million. Six and a half million goes to the Coastal Commission, Ocean Protection Council, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife to really begin the inter-agency environmental review process for what's taking place in state waters. There was another 2.2 million that was allocated and 800,000 is specifically, uh, to look at ways to reduce the transmission requirements out of Humboldt Bay. And then there was an additional 11 million for the Port of Humboldt Bay to do the infrastructure. And so by July 30th, the Harbor District is going to apply for a $56 million port infrastructure development program grant, leveraging the $11 million. The Harbor District is trying to do underwriting to see if we can come up with an additional 6 million. And so we were looking for commitment from the county of an additional 6 million so that we can get the funds to construct this. So again, what I'm asking the board is basically to say, in the first place, this is really is the first step. Do you want to be our partner to revitalize the small peninsula and work together to make Humboldt Bay the, the west coast hub? And then will the board invest up to 6 million for this, uh, new terminal? And so, um, I just also wanted to state is that all of the coastal dependent industrial property owners in the, in the small peninsula submitted a letter of support for the Harbor District. This is not a small thing. You guys know those, those property owners, they're a pretty independent lot. And, uh, there's direct competition. But what they see is that we need to put a shot in the arm in Humboldt, build a new terminal, and then the ramifications will spread around the port to these other docks and that this really is a good use of public funds. And so I'm going to stop there and really want to thank the board for, for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Larry. And I know I have a question, but I'd like to ask, um, Supervisor Bone, looks like he has a question.
Yeah, Larry, and I, I think we've been a pretty good partner with the harbor because we've been giving money for, I think we've done three studies on the Redwood Dock alone with, uh, headwaters monies and stuff. We've been a partner all along. But I, as we move on, I, I want to remind you, don't forget King Salmon and that two and a half billion from PG&E and our dredging and our check valves and all those things down there that have never happened. And I mean, we've got, there's a lot of money and, and I, I just, I just don't want us to be the shiny, you know, grab over there. And as you say, we're going to be partners. So you're saying we'll get our money back in tax dollars or will we get money from the reserves? Because what we're doing, and, you know, we just faced this a little while ago on the onshore wind. Nobody wanted a large foreign company coming in here and doing a big wind project. And that's kind of like what we're doing here, which I didn't have a problem with then. I don't have a problem with now. And we're doing the same thing with Nordic. I mean, large foreign companies, we're going to have to be, I catch y'all a long time because I say Humboldt's for business, but I noticed you said the port is open for business. So I, uh, I'm not just for big foreign businesses, but I catch y'all for that. So I just want to make sure that we're going to, uh, get our dredging. So I just want to make sure that we're going to get our dredging done and all our other stuff and not throw all our eggs into this basket because it's the new thing that's landed on our shore. I just, I'm just, I'm just hoping for the best, and I just wanted to, and I wanted to reiterate the fact that the county has been, has been a partner with the port since the JPA was founded. So it's, it's not the fact, whether we give you the money or not, we're partners because we're joined in hip because we need each other, so.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Bone. I have a, yeah Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks, through the chair. I mean, I don't think, I really don't think that today the Board is going to be just laying out $6 million from our budget, just, but I think it's, this is a good question for us about what our participation is in this, in this potential venture, what it means in terms of like advocating for that and knowing that there's a lot of challenges associated with it, and a lot of, you know, potential and opportunity as well. And I, and I know that as the decision-making body in terms of SEQA, at least on land, we probably don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves in sort of some of the decisions that we move forward with. And I will say, this is a little bit different in that, you know, having been around the Harbor District for over a decade myself, I want to, this is, this is different in that so often we were sort of courting things that were coming to, or, you know, trying to get things to come to Humboldt Bay and to do things and sort of making, you know, doing studies on things we sort of thought would work or maybe not work. This is a bit different in that, you know, we as a community are being asked by both, you know, the nation and the state to participate in, in, you know, the advancement of renewable energy, you know, as, in a West Coast perspective. And so this is a little, this is different, that the motivators and the, and the, and the drive externally is, is, you know, far more, it's far stronger than it's been in. I think, I think maybe we should probably have a real, a different agenda item at some point in the future where we really discuss this, and, and we might want to pull together some sort of subcommittee or, or something, some ad hoc discussion with the district and the county to really, you know, ferret out some of this stuff. Because I, I think we should participate in some way, shape, or form in this, and so, and it should be significant. I'm just not prepared today without some more information to like say where we're, you know, a big financial number to that, to add to that.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. And I was, I'd like to tag on to both Supervisor Bone and Wilson. I mean, I think we are, I think we're, we're partners, no matter how you look at it, I believe. And I, I find it interesting, I was going to ask Larry if you could clarify a little more about, you know, you said, you know, the loan, grant, or conditional funding. So if I'm hearing you correctly, and I think Supervisor Wilson is also correct, that today we're not necessarily ready to like put that kind of outlay, you know, out there, but when you say loan, grant, or conditional funding, that seems like it's pretty open and there's options and opportunities. It would really be helpful if we had more information from me to have more information about what all those different opportunities or options would look like, actually, and I don't know if you have that available. And Supervisor Wilson, is your hand up again or still up?
No, no, that was just from before, but I, I think your question through the chair, your question about what those financial, I guess, commitments might be, you know, what are, what are, what's our menu of those options is a good question.
Okay, all right, thank you. Right, well, any other questions for Larry right now? Don't see anybody, you'll probably just want to stay on with us. And then, again, I'll ask before we go to the public for comment, is there any other directors or department heads that would like to add anything? And I'm not seeing any hands up. All right, so we have one hand up in the queue right now. If you're on the phone or watching at home and you want to make a comment, and hopefully you've called in by now, just press star nine so that we know you want to make a comment. Each person gets three minutes. I would say if you are granting, if you are someone who has requested funding, please do let me know, because I do want to give an opportunity for those folks to have a conversation if a board member asks a question. So the one person we have has the last four digits of 3876, and press star six to unmute. Three, there you are. Welcome in. And who is this, first of all?
Yes, this is Eli Napa, City Manager in Trinidad. This is regarding the Measure Z funding request.
All right, go ahead. Thank you, Eli. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that what we did was, we submitted our application. I feel bad that it appeared confusing. For the past, since 2007, we've had a one deputy position and an extra one-half deputy. The last two funding cycles, the 2019, 2020, and 2020 to 2021, that halftime position was unavailable to the city, therefore, we did not get funding because the sheriff's office was unable to provide it. However, this past October, the City of Blue Lake agreed to share one of their deputies with us, so now we currently have that half-deputy position, and that's why we applied this year to, in order to get that half-deputy position funded with Measure Z funds. So I just wanted to make it clear, we're not asking for any additional position that the sheriff's office does not have. We're simply asking for the funding from Measure Z in order to fund the halftime deputy that we are sharing with Blue Lake. So hopefully, that'll clarify what our request was in the Measure Z application, and we're hoping to get funding so that we could afford to pay for that position.
All right, thank you, Eli, for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have no other attendees up, so we will come back this afternoon or this evening to the public comment period again, go back to the Board. Supervisor Wilson?
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry, there was just one other point I wanted to draw out, you know, related to the request from the, from the Harbor District, and that, you know, the request for 6 million is a lot, but in scale, we also have a request for half a million for a stoplight, right? So when you compare like what, you know, what we're, you know, what the scale is in these different things, I mean, it, it is a lot, but there is a lot that, you know, that's being proposed with, with regards to that. And I'm not, again, not advocating that we just drop $6 million today for, for this particular thing, I'm just saying it's all in scale. I did want to go back to the ARPA money. I, you know, there is a request from the Arcata Recreational District with relationship to that. I mean, I know that, that it, that, that money is, you know, relevant to the losses that our different jurisdictions and agencies have had, and I can say that certainly these, the recreational district has facilities that had to be maintained the whole time, and there's just no way to bring in income during that space, during, during the time of COVID. And so it would be really great if we could be helpful to the Recreation District with some of those ARPA funds, and so I'm hoping that we can, we can do something with that, either today or when we get to the panel.
Supervisor Bone?
They didn't get PPP money? They didn't?
I think that they're not eligible for PPP money because they were an agency.
I have, no, I just was going to have a question for Assistant CIO Hayes. And it may be, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of materials that we've been looking through for today and tomorrow, so maybe I just missed it. We talked a bit about, you know, First Five and about childcare, and are we having any of those conversations in, in the budget? You know, because I was wondering, where is that fitting in? And like I said, it could have been just something I, I don't know, went too fast by, but if you could kind of, you know, explain what we do, what you're thinking we could do to at least consider helping in that realm of childcare.
Sure. I haven't received any formal request from Marion Hansen, the Director of First Five, but I have been in communication with her and let her know that our intention was to return to the Board probably in the month of July with a more formalized spending plan, and that she and I would ensure that we touched base prior to that and stayed in communication so that I could present that to your Board at that time. And same goes with the recommendations contained in today's report that might be eligible for ARPA funding. I would return to your Board in July and include those as a potential funding option, and then give your Board the discretion to decide which to say yes and no to.
All right, thank you. That's helpful. All right. No other comments by Supervisors? No hands up from department heads? Wait, Supervisor Wilson?
Sure, I'll just keep going through the chair if I can.
And Supervisor Bushnell, and then Madron.
Thank you, thank you. And one of the things that we're spending money on is facilities here in different ways, both in facilities that we own and facilities that we lease. And I was wondering, it seems like we have two different requests for roof repairs, both for the courthouse and for the jail. Is that true? Is it for, are they separate just budgetarily, or would that be like a single sort of effort to, to deal with both of those things?
Those are separate items, but both covering portions of the courthouse.
Okay. And we have, there's, in, there's also, I think it's a pretty significant amount of money to move our, our Economic Development Department over to the, what is it, the Something Plaza, I guess, what do we call that? The Bankers Plaza or something like that?
Humboldt Plaza.
Humboldt Plaza. And I, you know, and as I've said in the past, I'm, you know, I'm generally speaking that I really want us to, to, you know, move forward as fast as we can to a facility that the county owns. You know, we have this facilities management plan. We're going to be spending a significant amount of money for that move and the folks that are in there, and it's not the most awesome location. And then we also have the, you know, where the planning department, and we have requests for hundreds of thousands of dollars to, you know, revamp that space as, you know, for as long as we can possibly, it's like, it's like, I feel like it's like my old Subaru kind of, and, and, and we really could really use a new facility, and we just, we just keep spending more and more on that. But we also have some, we have at least one department in this structure where, you know, there's, you know, has been expressed some concerns about, you know, being a windowless space, and, and, and I'm hoping that if we, we might consider some allocations in the future to maybe, you know, take a look at where, where some of those spaces might be able to be moved to, because we're, you know, it is part of where we're trying to, we're trying to make a place for, that's a good workspace, and we're talking about that in the, the efforts we're making to try and advance the culture of this workspace and those sorts of things. And so I would, I would hope that in, in these discussions that we're, we're thinking about strategies and funding that we might have to, to relieve some of these departments of some of these kind of spaces. And even, I mean, even in our, in, in, right next to you is an office that doesn't have a window, right? You know, there's, there's, there's lots of offices in this building that have windows, but there's hardly any whole departments that do, and I think we might want to be thinking about if there's some way we can, we can address that, so.
Get in your buildings. Get in your building, so everybody can have a window. That way, there's no middle offices.
I, I don't mean that every, every office needs a window particularly, but it, I, I think, I think that when whole departments don't have a window, then, then maybe we might want to think about how, you know, how we might want to arrange that.
Supervisor Bushnell and then Madron.
Thank you through the chair. Alicia, thank you for the presentation. This is my first budget, and it's a lot, and I'm, I struggle with where to fit everything in because it's so new to me, but I just want to say that I am anticipating, Rex and I have been, you know, we're on the ad hoc committee for the Veterans Hall in Garberville, and I anticipate an item coming to the agenda later this month or early July, so I want that on people's minds. I don't know if that's the right way to do that. And then also the Fortuna Veterans Hall in Fortuna, I know that they had requested some monies for that facility, but I also, the bathrooms down there are terrible, and it is utilized a lot, and so I also want to, that, that facility is utilized a lot, and I think it's really important that we try to keep our facilities up, especially the ones that are working right now, workable. So that is something I'm on my mind also, and I apologize because I don't know the process, but I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciated the City Manager from Trinidad calling in to clarify that they did not modify their proposal. They just clarified that they've been asking for funding for a halftime position, and by sharing that with Blue Lake, they now have that. And so again, I just want to reiterate my hope that, or my suggestion, that it ought to be on the same playing field as all the others, and if we need to cut to fund all of them, there ought to be some sort of a process for doing that versus Trinidad just being put in last and then trying to figure out what to cut to do that. So I appreciated him calling in and clarifying that issue. And I really strongly support the F and Oak Street project. I think it's been long known that there's some serious problems there. I'm glad that one's on, on the budget agenda as a possibility. And the Arcata Pool, I mean, that's been a longstanding asset to that community. It's very hard to get those things dealt with, and during COVID, they got hit pretty hard. So those are my three things, and then, yeah, I look forward to having the Garberville Vet's Hall coming back to us through the, through the facilities planning process and the rest of it, and you can certainly throw my hat in the ring for supporting, getting that real fixed and doing what we can with that building, but I guess we'll wait for the facilities report from Public Works on that before we proceed, but I just wanted to throw my support behind that as well.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. Don't see any of the other comments at this time. Ms. Hayes?
I just, yes, yes Supervisor Bone, I'm sorry. This is Ron Benwagans. I just wanted to mention to, and I see it's in the Ferneal Vets, so it doesn't get to be a situation like the Garberville Vets. So we have heat, and they have no heat whatsoever down there, and that has been an issue, but it's being addressed, so again, I appreciate that support from the Board.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Hayes, we're supposed to come back at 5:30. Do you need any specific direction from the Board or on what you heard here? Or yes, or I see our CIO Nielsen nodding her head.
Through Chair Bass, yes, it would be helpful if your Board gave us some general direction on what funding requests you would like to have funded in the 21, 22 budget.
Okay. So, and then that, after that, you would come back with showing us how it would work, kind of, where it fit. Okay, so I've heard a few things. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
Through the CIO, and, and again, I think the Arcata Pool is great for my child, learn to swim and everything else. Do we open a can of worms when we start funding Public Works projects for municipalities that, considering we have so many, we have so many holes, and, I mean, we're talking about trying to redo our vets halls and everything else, and coming in and helping a, you know, Fortuna's talking about building a pool, we have to help them. I'm just, do we cross a line just so we don't say, well, you did it for them?
Through the chair, any of these projects that would be funded with ARPA funds will need to demonstrate a revenue loss or a connection will need to demonstrate a revenue loss or a connection to COVID-19. So in the case of the Arcata Community Pool, I think because that pool was closed, it is likely that they were not receiving revenue. So that would be a distinction. New projects, to the best of my knowledge, are not something that we can use for ARPA funds. There's a small carve out for water infrastructure and really broadband. So unless you can meet those Public Works project criteria, I don't believe you'd be entering into any kind of sticky situation.
Perfect. It was asked and answered. Thank you.
Director, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, Amy. So the, the request from planning and building will come off?
I, I think there has been a misunderstanding with the planning and building item. Your board had previously allocated funds for one-stop permitting. And so part of what is in the staff report on page three is that these, this request could be funded with, with the previously allocated funds that were earmarked for one-stop permitting. So if Director Ford is still interested in having this project move forward, your board could out, could change the earmark to address the interior issues in the building.
Director Ford?
Through the chair, if that's possible. Yes, that's fine. I was fearful that the way it was being presented is we were competing against health and safety needs to improve a building and that's not where we wanted to be. But if this is money that is, was our understanding that was previously earmarked, then we'll, we'll leave that there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I would ask CAO Nielsen on follow up there. So when it comes out of what we've had earmarked for the one-stop, you know, permitting and that, I mean, I hope that we're not taking that whole thing off our plate eventually that we're still aiming to go that direction.
Correct, Chair Bass. Yes. The facilities master plan will be coming back to your board likely in July. And so that project has not been removed from the queue.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson? Can you turn your microphone on?
Yes, sorry about that. So with, with regards to requests from planning, Director Ford did mention the backlog related to code enforcement. And I, I don't know about other supervisors, but I definitely get calls related to code enforcement issues. And it's not just, I mean, it is, there, there are some spaces and places that are just really falling apart out there from neglect relationship to, to property owners. And, and some of them are not in Humboldt County. I mean, the property's in Humboldt County, but the owners are somewhere else. And so I was just wondering, John, do you think having one new person would be? I mean, I know you requested two, but would having even one more staff person would, would be helpful in regards to code enforcement?
One would definitely be helpful.
John, if we, if we added that one more, can we look at our ordinances and our timeframes? Because I know we're dealing with some that you and I have, I showed you the first week you were here and we're still dealing with them and we have to do this and we have to abide by this. We have to abide by that. Is there a way we can streamline that? So these, because what happens is these places get twice as bad. By the time we actually operate on them, they're twice as bad as they were when we first started the process. So is there a way as a board, we can streamline this process, still, still recognizing their rights and benefits? But the problem being is usually the rights and benefits we're protecting are usually somebody that has no ties to the property whatsoever. They just happen to be squatting. So I don't know if there's something we can do on a, on an ordinance level to make your job easier rather than five trips there, two trips and you're done type of deal? Can your, can your team come back and say, boy, it should be easy if we can do it this way? Or if they would?
We, we will explore that and see if there are modifications to the process that we could propose that would be beneficial.
I would love to help you with that.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I really think we really need two positions. I think when John asked for two, what he really needs is probably five. But, you know, he's trying to be conservative and I don't want to speak for him. But, you know, not hiring these positions, we risk losing the existing personnel we have. And the best way to make these courses take a lot longer is to be understaffed and then to lose staff and have to go back through training again and make all those reconnections in terms of contacts with the landowner and all that stuff. So I appreciate the effort to get one, but I really would like to see two positions as requested. I mean, it easily is funded by code enforcement payments and other things, even though I know that we keep these things separate within the budget process, et cetera. I think it's money well spent.
Yeah. I, I would say I think it also makes communities feel safer. I mean, I've got, I haven't sent in what I have recently from over on the peninsula that like, we need more people. I totally support giving Director Ford when he needs in that respect. I have a question for the CAO and, you know, we've had a lot of meetings and maybe I'm just like, somehow this is, I'm thinking the wrong thing. But under the additional funding request, we do have the $200,000 for the Lou Edwards polling information. Didn't we have that on our agenda last week? Was it on our agenda tomorrow? It just seems like we've had that conversation recently.
Chair Bass, yes, we had the conversation, but we did not allocate the funds. So today is your opportunity to allocate the funds to that project, which we.
Got it. I'd like to, I'd like to put that in the queue then, in the mix. Thank you for, I'm glad I asked you because I was missing that piece. All right. So any others that, Supervisor Bushnell and Wilson then Madron? I'm not sure exactly in that order. I think it's close.
Um, thank you through the chair. I want to ask Alicia, so are, so during this time right now, are we considering the extra Measure Z funds also? And, and recommendations are the things that were unfunded? Is that, is that correct?
The recommendation is to fully fund the funded applications that I experienced reductions in their requested amount. And then to fully fund all of the remaining approved applications. And to address Supervisor Madron's concerns over Trinidad, your board could opt to reduce the bottom application, which would be the Lolita Chamber of Commerce for $500,000 in an amount that would equate to the needs to fully fund the Trinidad request.
So, um, thank you. And I wanted to ask about, so, so it would be that the, we would fund completely the ones that we already, that were already approved, which I have that list. And then it would be 14 through 23?
Uh, there, the numbers are broken up different. They're. Stand by one second. Yes, yes, you are correct. It's 14 through 23.
So then we're, we, on this list, we're considering funding the public safety and essential service primary through the sheriff patrols for $500,000 to Lolita Chamber of Commerce?
Correct.
And that is, that money goes to the Chamber of Commerce and then they hire patrol or?
Correct. Yes, we would, we would, well, there, I mean, there's some logistics that have to work out, we work out there if it goes back to our agency. But the contract would actually be with Lolita.
So the money for Trinidad, the 70, it's 79,000, I think?
Correct, yes. However, we do have, there was some unallocated funds that we already had. We also got notification from the sheriff's office that they could reduce their body ward camera request by $22,218. So at this point in time, in order to fund the Trinidad request, we are short $34,263.
Yes. Actually, we had Supervisor Wilson and Madron, but.
I, I'm actually not done. If I could finish, please.
Okay, yes, please.
Thank you.
It's 34.
What did you say?
I, I, I think the Lolita Chamber would be more than welcome to, to do their sister city Trinidad for the 34,000 to reduce from their 500 to work with the things. Because this is going to take a little time for them to come in and we can look at it again next year. But that's basically less than 10%. So, I mean, I, I think, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn, but they can hang me an effigy if they want. And then that way Trinidad will get, now you have to understand, and I, and I, and I think the public ought to realize this, up until 10, 12 years ago, both Blue Lake and Trinidad were funding police departments at $300,000 or $400,000 a year that they got from their sales tax and everything else. And now we're making, we're giving them a full-time or time and a half officer. Plus we're handling calls to those areas 24/7 and they don't have that outlay anymore. So we are helping make quite a bit of difference to them. So.
No, thank you. I just want to go back to the original questioning. Supervisor Bushnell was still in process and followed by Supervisors Wilson and Madron. But we've got some clarification. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask, Alicia, the Lolita, what are they currently doing, if anything? And how are they funding that?
That is a question I do not have an answer to. I can try to get them on the line and find that out by the 5:30 time slot potentially. But I, you know, I don't, I'm not that familiar with their funding sources and operations. This is just what we know through Measure Z.
Okay. And then also along that line of questioning, is it going to be that they're going to contract with our sheriff? Or is it private patrols? It's, I'm just curious. That's a lot of money to one entity. Not that I'm saying, I just want, would like some more information on the 500,000. And Rex, thank you for the clarification on, that was going to be my ask of you. Do you think that would be okay?
I'll pull the Lolita request, the actual application and forward that to your board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a question for Sheriff Hansel related to the deputy positions for mental health supervision. I was just, just wondering, I mean, there's, there's two FTEs in there. And I'm asking the same question I'm asking about from John. It's like, one FTE, is that functional? And also what, just, can you give us just a little description on what, what qualifications that position would have and, and just a little narrative on how that would help? Is the sheriff still here?
John, where are you?
I miss him. Maybe I'll have to come back to him at the.
In the evening?
In the evening time when we'll come back. So.
He's there. I mean, his, you're talking Director Ford, correct?
No, no, no. This is, this is the sheriff.
Oh, the sheriff. I'm sorry.
Sheriff Hansel. And then I just want to just reiterate, and I don't know if I, if there was any support with relationship to the, the general relief help with that regards with the 53,000. Really, this is the folks that really are, you know, the most vulnerable folks who are now, you know, they, they were afforded some, some assistance, but then now have to pay it back. And I think that that's, or in, or have already done so. And it's really not, it, it just really, we want to encourage people to use these funds for, for getting back on their feet, especially during COVID. It would be really great if we could help them out this time with the 53,000. So I'm hoping that we'll look in support for that.
Okay, thank you. And I think we do have Supervisor Madron.
Thank you. I very much appreciate all the work by the CAO's office on this budget and all the departments. I guess I'm having a hard time kind of keeping track of what decisions we need to make. And I, I know that you guys put out some really good attachments to kind of help guide us through all of that. But as we're talking and kind of supporting one thing or another, et cetera, it's just getting kind of confusing. And for me, it would probably be really helpful, perhaps the others, to boil it down to what are the final decisions we're trying to make here? What's on the table for consideration? What does that add up to? How much money do we have to still consider? And then we could go through this somehow logically to try and get you all the feedback you're needing to be able to finalize the budget. I'm just having a hard time tracking all the little pieces.
And can I, can I just clarify also before we go to Ms. Hayes? And then we'll Supervisor Bone, then to Ms. Hayes. Also tonight, we do have more public testimony. So whatever we go in with today is, is still kind of just the template of what, what we're, we'll have at that point in time. So there is still opportunity, there'll be some potential changing, I think, before then too. Our CAO Nielsen here has their hand up and then I know Supervisor Bone was, was wanting to comment. Amy?
So, so usually during the first portion of the budget hearings is where we receive feedback from your board on the items that, the additional funding requests, items that you would like to see funded in the upcoming budget year. So those items can be found on page three and four of the staff report. So that's what staff are listening for right now. And we will be bringing back a spreadsheet demonstrating what your board intends to fund. And we will then also let your board know what funding sources will be utilizing to fund those requests. In addition, we're also listening for what you want to see happen with the Measure Z funds. And it sounds like we're relatively close to a solution on Measure Z by reducing the Lolita request by, I think, 34,000. So we can also provide a spreadsheet for your board at the 5:30 meeting. So that's essentially what we're listening for. The items on pages three and five are what we are trying to determine if these are items your board would like to, to fund. Pages three and five of the staff report. And I also see that the sheriff is now on.
Can I, can I jump in real fast and add a little point of clarification? My apologies. I, I made an error. The $500,000 for Lolita was not being recommended for funding because it contains sheriff deputies and the sheriff was not able to provide those staffing at this point in time. So in your attachment that details out the unfunded applications, that one's actually listed as not funded. So we would need to identify other sources to reduce the funding in order to approve the Trinidad application. And those options would be to reduce the $10,000 from the Public Works PSA application, number 20, that ranks number 22 for 10,000. And then move over to the funding applications that had reduced amounts. And the bottom one of that would be the Humboldt County Public Works, funding of 73,000 for Oak and F.
Rex, I mean, did you?
Yeah, that, thanks Alicia. Because I, the 500,000, I'm sitting here doing, going through everything for Lolita. Because I, we can't get half a deputy for Trinidad. I didn't know how we were going to get three. But I, but I am going to tell you, we have, as Supervisor Don's saying, Lolita is just like a city, you guys. It's got a downtown, it's got a housing tracks, it's got everything else. It has a crime wave like nowhere else. And I mean, three or four cars dumped on a weekly basis, a lot of burglary, a lot of theft, as the sheriff will tell you. So I'm going to be on the sheriff to make sure we make a commitment. I don't know how we do it, but we've got, we've got to show them a little bit more support than they've been getting because we've got some issues. Sheriff's been doing a great job, but it's been tough. They are actually patrolling their own streets at night. They're walking the streets, trying to save a little bit of the issue. So. And then the other thing I, I've got a question for. You explained the ARPA funds to me about the lost revenues, like the swimming pool was closed. But we're also talking about ARPA funds for $6 million for the marine terminal, which I didn't know COVID had held up. So is that the same? The way that it's funded, we, we could be made available through ARPA. But I, I'm confused. We're, we can use ARPA for?
So we can use ARPA for lost revenues. There'll need to be a demonstration that what, that was associated to COVID-19. The $6 million for the heart. was associated to COVID-19. The six million dollars for the Harbor District, we're still evaluating with our legislative advocates on whether or not that would be approved. We are actually waiting for some Department of Treasury guidance to drop at any moment now, where they plan to provide a little bit more guidance on the infrastructure improvements that are allowable for water infrastructure and broadband. There's also still an opportunity to work with our ledge advocates to advocate for an expansion on those infrastructure improvements that would fall under ARPA. So, we would certainly look to tap the ARPA funds first and foremost if we could find that nexus and believed that it was in compliance with the Department of Treasury guidance. And if not, then we would need to seek other funding sources.
Do we have, if ARPA doesn't come through, do we have six million dollars?
Through the chair, no, you do not.
Thank you.
Now, that, and I'd like to just say, before I go to Supervisor Bushnell, that it's not necessarily being asked to be a direct grant or giveaway. There's a whole, we need to still consider what that even might look like. So, I think that's a discussion for a little bit another time. Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, that was a discussion about the six million Harbor, Harbor Fund money, right? What, so I wanted to look at the six hundred and ninety-two thousand for the Humboldt County Visitor Bureau. Is that, isn't that on the agenda for tomorrow? Or is this different?
I believe you might be referring to the, the, oh gosh, the film commission's on tomorrow for the report.
Oh, so this six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, that's for Humboldt County Visitor Bureau here in Eureka, correct?
Right.
And so, is that a discussion that will come back, or is this, this will just be funded to them?
Through the chair, this, this particular request, we do believe could be funded through ARPA. So, if your board, is this that general direction? When Assistant CIO Hayes returns to your board in July with a more formalized ARPA budget, that would be included.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's repetitive, and I'm just trying to understand.
No, it's, it's okay.
Okay, and then also, can I flop over to the Measure Z thing, paperwork? So, the, the one-time seasonal lifeguard and vehicle patrol of the Humboldt County coast, what coast is that? And that's eighty-five, and is that on this funding that we're requesting for today? Nineteen.
Application nineteen?
Yeah.
Or rank nineteen, the redwood?
Rank nineteen.
I, I would need to pull their application and glean those details from it. And I could also forward you a copy of that application.
That is in consideration for today, right? It's on the list?
Correct.
And then also Humboldt County Public Defender, the two hundred thousand dollars is, could you send that to me also, Alicia?
Sure.
Okay. And that additionally is on for today also, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Everything in your attachment three is on the table for consideration today.
Except for twenty-three, okay.
Except for the, yeah.
Okay, and then, so if we were to find the funding for the Trinidad halftime deputy, is that correct, Steve? Is there, Bill, or Sheriff Hansel, is there already a deputy there? Halftime?
This is, through the chair, this is something that, that Trinidad and Blue Lake have worked out amongst themselves. And so, the contract is currently up. And so, we will work with, with the county, with, the county's going to work with Trinidad and Blue Lake to, to renegotiate those contracts. So, there's a lot of things that could change here in the future. But the currently Trinidad is, is, or Blue Lake is sharing one of their two deputies halftime, you know, to Trinidad for, I guess, seventy thousand dollars.
I'm apologizing for not knowing, but I'm going to ask the question. So, if we, if we find the money somewhere, is there, is that not a guarantee that they would get that sheriff halftime?
Well, there's, like I said, a new contract is coming up, and so we have to negotiate for the contract. Currently, they are fully staffed, and the rest of the county is twenty deputies down. So, so we got to do some equity as far as that goes. And so, it's something that we're definitely going to be looking at.
Okay, thank you. Both of you, thank you very much.
Sheriff Hansel, I thought you had your hand up also about the, the swimmer. And then I had one question for you, then I'll go to Supervisor Wilson.
Yes, so the state parks currently has a swimmer program, lifeguard program up at, in the north part of the county. They would like to expand that program to do roving lifeguard patrols. And so, that, I think, is from the, the North Jetty North, and that's, I think, their goal, is to kind of look at some of those hotspots where we have some issues with, with, with people getting in the water and, and kind of up their patrols in those kind of areas.
And I thank you for that, because I was going to mention that there's some very active groups over there on water safety and, and some of the challenges that have happened. But for the sheriff, my question was going to be regarding the evacuation management platform. I mean, I, I think, you know, it is concerning when you hear about, you know, other places and the challenges and evacuation. Sometimes they work better than others, sometimes it ends up very badly. So, I'm curious, you know, is this something that you, you know, obviously you'd like to have it now? Is this something that would just still stay on the, you know, on the radar, or if it's not funded now, for later? Because it does seem like it has some, some definite benefits, but I wanted to ask for a few more.
The benefit is that, that the same zones will work between us, Sheriff's Office OES, Cal OES, as well as the fire, Cal Fire. We're, we're working off the same zone because they work with all those different entities to create the zones, as well as looking at the, the topography and the geography and figure out where the best zones are and the rate, or the, the, the best way of evacuating those, those specific areas. So, right now, we don't have another funding source. We are going to try and tap into some hazard mitigation funds if the general fund doesn't work out, but that's not our decision. That's going to be a federal decision whether or not they would approve this funding. And, and so, you know, it's something that we have to come up with evacuation zones. We have to do this. It is, you know, last year, we worked with our, our Web GIS and Code Enforcer, they did a phenomenal job when we had to do evacuations last year. But we need to do this with the whole county and come up with a plan and also a way of, of introducing the zones to the different communities, so people would know their zone and know the evacuation routes ahead of time. And, and so that's something that we can totally do. And I think it's, as far as the, the price, it is a pretty good price for what we get out of it.
And the cities, and it would, I mean, the other municipalities would also be involved in that.
Yes, so it'd be, it'd be a countywide, a countywide thing.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. Through the chair, this, I had a question before for Sheriff Hansel. It had to do with the mental health deputies. And I was just kind of, if you could give me a little bit of a, give us a little bit of a narrative of, you know, what the qualifications and kind of the job description of that would be. And would one be not sufficient necessarily, but better than zero in, in terms of that?
Yes. So, right now, you know, we would just, we would just recruit two additional correctional deputies to backfill two positions where we would fill internally. We do have people, correctional deputies that are working in our jail-based competency treatment center, working with mental health people already. So, we would put either one or two correctional deputies into the secured housing unit area where we are housing the severely mental ill that are, that are either waiting to go to Napa State Hospital or waiting for a bed here in our facility. And, you know, the, we thought that we would have a little bit of relief as far as their, because we have a jail-based competency treatment center, and we have restored a lot of people to competency to go back to court. However, we've seen our numbers go up. Last year or two years ago, we had up to twenty people in our correction facility that are incompetent to stand trial. Now, we have thirty-plus. And this is the kind of thing, we only have six beds here, and Napa, which is one of the closest state hospitals that we can ship to, is full. And so, we have to, you know, again, find ways to, to bring a therapeutic environment there. So, our correctional deputies do receive additional training. We are, you know, working with mental health. I'm happy to say that, that DHHS is working and has mental health staff in the jail, staffed, working with our, our partners from Well Path, and, and they're doing quite well with trying to, you know, restore people competency and give people the treatment they need while they're in the facility.
And as, this is a follow-up to the coastal patrol proposal for Measure Z. And, and, you know, I, I forward to you, I think, also, probably Supervisor Bass and, and as well, you know, a sort of ongoing concerns and, and call-ins from folks from the public related, not just to water safety, but really just safety on the beach, having to do with parent vehicles, other activities that are happening out there. And so, I would assume that this patrol would help with, with, you know, trying to, you know, curb those activities as well.
If you're talking about the, the lifeguard, so they would not be state peace officers, they would just be a visible, you know, deterrent of a government vehicle driving in these areas. So, that could be some more eyes and ears, for sure. But it is a lot of space to cover. And, and so I'm sure they're going to be doing the numbers and looking at where the most drowning incidents occur, whether it's Moonstone, whether it's the, the North Jetty, or if it's, you know, up in Big Lagoon area. So, there's a lot of things, places that they could patrol. Now, just getting back, I know earlier we talked about HDSO and the message that was sent to the board supervisors at Measure Z Committee regarding recruitment, and thankful to some of the, the board that reached out and to ask some follow-up questions. The deal is recruitment is very difficult all around the state right now. We are competing for the same people. We're seeing reduced class sizes at the academies. And, and we're having a very, very difficult time recruiting. That's exactly right. We're doing everything we possibly can to do that. And the, the issue comes is how do we compete? And HDSO is saying that we need a raise. And a raise would definitely, you know, get us in a position where we could recruit laterals. And, and lateral hires are beneficial for a couple of different reasons. One is we don't have to send them through a six-month academy. We don't have to send them through a four-month training after the academy, and then, and then a year-long probationary training period. They would be on the street within six weeks. That's what the benefit is, you know, to have an lateral. And it saves the county costs. And yes, there's some, some upfront costs, but it's not as near as, as much as the, as hiring a brand-new deputy off the street, or, you know, from, off the street. So, I do want to say that we invest, you know, in, in, in our people and getting them raises. And I know we're in a difficult position because we haven't closed last year out. But I do urge this board to take a proactive approach with providing public safety services and provide a raise, so we can actually get deputy sheriffs hired here and, and attract laterals to the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office.
Appreciate that. Through the chair, I still have one more question. This has, and then this is a question for CIO Nelson or Assistant CIO Hayes. It has to do with, with the request from the, from the Harbor District and its connection with the ARPA funds. And do you feel like this would be, we would be requesting more, more funding, more ARPA funding, or is this, is this, would this come from the, the chunk that's already come to us currently?
This would come out of the chunk that has already been allocated to us, which are two installments of thirteen million. Sean Quincy might be, Sean, do you have any input as to other avenues that might be available to us?
And the CIO also has their hands up. Any hand up?
Through the chair, I just wanted to say that what, in terms of the Harbor District's request, what we're looking for is clarification that we could use ARPA funds to, to fund their requests. We're not asking for additional ARPA dollars. So, I hope that answers your question. And then, I'm sorry, there was another question in there somewhere. Just want to make sure.
No, that was, that, that was, that got to my question. I appreciate that.
And if I may continue, if your board were so inclined to fund six million in, to the Harbor District, we would probably have to look at modifying our finance plan. And that would take some exploration on the county's part, because we don't have six million available immediately at this point in time.
And through the chair, I didn't, I haven't heard any of the board members say that six million dollars is something we're going, we're going to allocate at this moment. But I do think that we, we, what we're really being asked for is, are we a partner, or how, how could we become more of a partner than we already are with relationship to this potential? And I think it's worthy of, of more discussion from this board, but not today necessarily.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Supervisor Wilson, so yeah, we're definitely working with, with Larry in the Harbor District to identify funding sources. I know in the, in this, governors may revise. He is looking at allocating some ARPA money to go to ports, but they've got to fit within the, the guidelines. So, I don't know, you know, we talked with Joe Cron at Paragon, like Assistant CIO Hayes said, it looks like this specific request won't fit in with the current ARPA guidelines. So, we're going to look at finding some ways to potentially, you know, ask the Treasury to, to modify its guidance. I also want to respond to Supervisor Bushnell's questions about the Measure Z funding request into the, for the, for the parks. Sheriff Hansel did a good job of talking about it. Right now, there's, it looks like there's one parks employee who patrols forty miles of coastline from Gold Bluff Beach down to Little River. And so, this would be looking for an additional state parks employee to add to that patrolling. And the public defender's request is for software to integrate with the courts system. Right now, they do a lot of downloading from the courts regards to case management, tracking activities, new court dates, things like that. And they upload it, or they manually enter that information into their own court system. And so, this is to, to integrate with the courts' software system.
Thank you. Through the chair, Sean, thank you.
All right, yeah. Rex, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I know we're going to have to, Sheriff Hansel, we're going to have to eventually have some patrol with, I mean, I know we do a trail, we pay, we help subsidize a trail patrol for the city of Eureka, which I, we're going to need some little help out of McKay. I can't, me and a few other guys take our forwarders out there from the ball fields and kind of chase off quite a few homeless out there. But it's starting to be a little bit more of a magnet than we want it to be. And I think if we don't have the patrol at the beginning, it's not going to be able to be controlled at the end. So, I'm not sure how we address that, because it's getting, a couple hundred people a day go through it, if not more. And I think we want to make sure that that experience, we've already had four or five serious interactions. And I've had to probably chase off six or eight with the help of Sheriff Green Diamond, everybody. So, I mean, that has to be looked at. And then I, and I do know, and I was going to ask Supervisor Wilson that, did the cities really, I know the city of Arcata got three and a half million dollars worth of ARPA funds also. So, I think all the cities got ARPA funds also, didn't they? I'm just trying to.
Well, I don't keep track of the city of Arcata's funding too much, but I would imagine that they would be eligible. But I'll ask CIO Nelson if she has any understanding of that.
Yes, the cities did receive ARPA funds directly.
It was in the paper. That's the only reason. I was looking at the percentages, so.
All right. And I see, CIO Nelson, you actually had your hand up before that question, correct? So, you wanted to...
I, thank you, Chair Bass. I was just going to offer a suggestion that possibly your board provides some direction on how you would like to see the Trinidad application funded. If your board is comfortable making some recommendations on where to cut, if your board is not comfortable, staff can take some time to call some of these folks to see if we can make some general reductions. But I thought maybe if we could get some general direction on Measure Z and then possibly move on to the general fund request, that might be helpful.
Great. Supervisor, oops. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I don't want to hold up the process, and my question was... I don't want to hold up the process, and my question was about the, and maybe Sean can just get me the information, the money or the patrol for the coast. I'm just wondering, currently it sounds like we have a 40 miles that is done. I just would like some information on how successful that program is and it no means I don't support it. I'm just curious because I haven't heard of it or didn't know of it. So, thank you.
First Supervisor Bushnell, we could get that. Do you want me to try to see if somebody from the parks wants to come back at 5:30 to continue the discussion?
No, I'm fine with the request with what Sheriff Hansel said, but I just would like to be, I would just like to have the knowledge for myself.
Sure.
So if I could just get something.
So my question for CAO Nelson is, you know, we were talking about the Measure Z. Is there something we can get? I mean, because I know we have all of our, we have a lot of papers and stacks. And is there something that we can pull up that show the different Measure Z ones that we are looking at that might be the ones we'd ask for, to consider taking less so we can make the other one work?
It would be attachment three of your board report.
And through the chair, yes, we can share the, we can share the attachment on the screen if that would be helpful.
That would be lowly for me anyway. Any papers? But yes, yes Rex?
Sheriff Hansel, Sheriff Hansel still there? Sheriff, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
Is there, just because I noticed we had a new list last few weeks, is there an offset of any amount of money for the body worn cameras that come out of forfeiture money to cover this shortfall for Trinidad right off the giggle? That really makes people warm and fuzzy when they do. I know it doesn't make you happy, but it makes everybody warm and fuzzy when they get forfeiture funds actually out there.
Are you asking that forfeiture funds fund Trinidad? Or are you funding the body?
No, 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 we can't do wages with it, but we could certainly buy body worn cameras and then the excess from the body worn cameras can fund Trinidad.
Seems like a good question. Thank you.
Let's see. We could do 50,000 off of that. I could cover the purchase of the body worn cameras from asset forfeiture and the staff can be purchased or can be, the staff time or whatever can be provided by Measure Z. If that helps.
Okay, so that would, that comes up where we got the Trinidad issue handled pretty much then?
30,000, short, right. Thirty, 34,263 through the chair, sorry.
No, thank you.
I was going to come to measure, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to do the staff personnel to Measure Z, but not, okay.
So didn't that kind of take care of what, I mean Supervisor Bone, isn't that what you were requesting and it seems like it would work? Or am I misunderstanding?
50,000 of it.
How much is remaining?
34,000.
And that's, if I could staff it. I mean, I just want everyone to realize that, so.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, maybe I'm confused, Alicia, but my understanding was in order to get the Trinidad proposal funded completely, you just needed to come up with 34,000. And the sheriff has just offered 50,000. So thank you Sheriff Hansel, I don't think we need to reduce you by 50,000. I think just 34,000 reduction in the body camera piece would give Trinidad the full funding for the position. And all of this understanding that you're still going through negotiations with Blue Lake and Trinidad.
That is correct.
Okay, so, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm sorry, I'm just, it's the city of Trinidad, Trinidad, one time sheriff, 79,000. So we're. We had 23,000 that was already unallocated, so we're utilizing that or allocating those funds. Also, the sheriff had reduced their body worn cameras. And Sheriff, we should clarify with you that this isn't the same thing. I spoke with Regina that she wanted to change the position titles and that offered a savings of 22,218.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay. There we go. So what else? What else do we want to send staff back to try to bring back to us at 5:30? I mean, that's the Measure Z, that was a piece that CAO Nelson suggests we tried to tackle. So it looks like we did that one. So then the additional other funding requests, I guess, is also, I see Supervisor Wilson, then I have a question for Alicia. Go ahead Supervisor Wilson.
We have, it would appear to be the smallest request that was given to us, which is from the law library to purchase the annotated California codes. And I was just kind of wondering if staff has any opinion about that.
Anyone care to chime in on it?
I believe the CAO staff has no opinions on that.
Well, I think there was a request that was made in public comment to us and I reviewed what was given to us. And it seems to me that this seems like a reasonable allocation. So I'd like to add it to the list if it's possible. I'd also like to, I just, I heard from the city of Arcata that they don't have the ability to allocate to their ARPA funds externally to other districts. They can only have it internally, so.
What, all the pools, not the city of Arcata's?
No, no, the pool is Arcata Recreation District. It's its own, it's a, it's a district, independent. And that's why they don't get the PDP.
So I have a question for staff, I mean Alicia or whoever. So a lot of these things we were saying are part of the ARPA funding. So are we trying to, do we need to have those full conversations now or is that the conversation that will be coming back to us later? I mean, what do we need to spend with you regarding those right now for today?
We've been taking notes on what your board was supportive of and will return to your board in July, most likely to propose an official budget. And we will bring those items back to your board at that time.
Okay. So is that something, you know, I know Supervisor Wilson has been asking, is that something that might be further consideration for the pool at that time also or is this different funds?
Correct. The pool, the pool would be considered at that time. But I do have that noted as an item that has your board's support.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, it looks like we're getting somewhere. So if we remove all the ARPA items on that list, because they're going to come back later once we understand the qualifications and opportunities there and have that as a separate discussion, now we're down to this list of things that would have to be funded through the contingency account, right? I think that's what it says, yeah, the contingency reserves. I'm curious, the 15,600 for the grand jury to utilize the Eureka Vets Hall as a meeting location. My understanding is they've always used conference room B. What's the reasoning behind them needing to spend money for another meeting location when we already have one?
Through the chair, the grand jury contacted me and said that they wanted to run three meetings simultaneously, and so they needed additional space. So the conference room A is, it's not a rather large space to begin with. So they are requesting additional space. We've located additional space at the vets hall and the veterans are requesting an annual fee. And so that is the request that's before your board today. In addition, I will also say that the grand jury has increased their use of conference room A pretty significantly over the years. And conference room space is very limited in the courthouse. And so freeing up conference room space would also be very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm hearing our CAO say she'd kind of like to see that considered and brought back to us as well, so that we have more space here that we can use when we need it. I think that's kind of what I'm hearing. Supervisor Wilson?
I support that. And I would also add on to that, if we're in need of conference space in this building, then maybe another motivator for us to consider how we might make some of the space, again, some of them more windowless spaces usable for conference rooms as opposed to places where people work for eight hours a day or more. So just a consideration and maybe we could see that, at least a little bit of budget associated with at least looking at that or how we might strategize for that.
All right, so looking at the list in front of us, I mean, I have a lot of things, X's drawn through them and circles and arrows. So the ARPA's we'll be talking about later, the ones that might be in those. We have the law library, the grand jury, the, what else is coming back from there? Did we decide the evacuation zone? What ones have you heard us say that you'd like us to review again this evening? Alicia, please.
Yes, I, you discussed briefly the $200,000 for Lou Edwards. And as we talked about, we do need those funds to be allocated because it's important to evaluate those ballot measures. We have the 3,700 for the law library, noted to bring back 400,000 for the Arcata community pool when we discuss ARPA. I've got nothing down for the 6 million. I think that's best to return on a more robust agenda item when we have more information. The 692, 500 for the convention, this Humboldt County Convention and Visitors Bureau, you discussed that, but I don't have it noted that that's necessarily affirmed, however it is in ARPA. So that's something we can reevaluate next month. The next is the 150, $150,150 for the sheriff's evacuation zone. Again, you did have a discussion on that, but I don't know that I received any affirmative that you would like to include it. So clarification on that would be helpful. And we've got 250 for probation, water damage, haven't talked about that yet. The 358, 185 for the upgrades to Clark complex, we have talked about that. And Director Ford would like to leave that request in if we can utilize the one stop permitting for that, which is possible. But again, looking for affirmation from your board. And then finally, we've got the 53,000 in ARPA funds for general relief, which is, has gained your board's support and will return next month.
Thank you, CAO Nelson.
Your board also discussed code enforcement, and so that is also on the list.
And also the mental health correctional deputy support.
So, we did not, okay, sorry, Supervisor Bushnell?
Just wanted to clarify with CAO Nelson that code enforcement is for two positions for planning and department and it's for traditional.
The request was for two positions, correct?
And for the traditional code enforcement?
I believe that is the case, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John.
So Ms. Hayes, you said that we talked about, well, you mentioned the probation, the water damage, and that we haven't necessarily brought it up or addressed it here. I'd like, Sean, Chief Brenneman is still, I see is, oh, you are. You want to, can you talk with us a bit more about that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Part of the construction process was tearing down the old juvenile hall. And to do that, it's attached to the probation building. And so they had to retrofit that. Part of that was they had to take off the roof. And during the removal of the roofs and replacement of the roofs, it rained and then we got water damage to the first and second floor of the probation building. And when they took a closer look at it, all that works found asbestos issues and the glue that's used in the 1970 tiles that were put in there. So we have that issue. So probation's probably going to get back in excess of $500,000 this year in unspent general fund because we went through austerity measures for the first fiscal year. It'd been my hope, if it ever met a schedule they could keep to, that we would have dealt with this during this fiscal year period. But I was asking that 250,000 we rolled over to address the floor issue and blah, blah, blah. And some more questions if you'd like.
Okay, that's, I remember you saying something about rolled over. So Alicia, does that trigger your, yes Supervisor Bone?
So did our public work through this or did we have a contractor that opened our roof up and let it rain? And did they not have insurance or is this hell haze?
This is the, this is the existing juvenile hall construction process, so it's part of that. And it's a contentious issue for sure. So I don't know how that will ultimately come out. But I have the entire probation staff working out of makeshift cubicles in the detention facility that is the regional facility. So we need to get it resolved at some point. And I think that this will be part of that process, right?
Since we have not seen this, are we actively going after? I mean, I know roofing contractors have, or whatever contractors, we're not liable for their mishaps. And this isn't an act of God.
I am not the expert in this particular area. I'm the recipient and the owner of the building. I do think one of the issues is that the asbestos that's in the building is a county problem regardless. So I mean, that's some of the, that's the conversation. But Rex, like I said.
No, I know, Sean.
I'm not really an expert in that area.
That's what a contractor looks at when he bids on a project, you know, is the evacuation of hazardous waste and everything else. And I'd love to see the bid to see if that's actually in there in his bid and we'll get double billed.
So all that is being a very complicated dance between the contractor, the surety company, the public courts, and the state who holds the actual bond that was funding this project. So there's a lot of pieces going on here, which I don't know that I'm even qualified or competent to really parse out for you. I mean, county council is involved, public courts is involved.
All right. Thanks, Sean.
Yeah.
Okay, so Alicia, is that, is that something that you would plan to bring back also, since you mentioned the rolling over the funds and how that would look?
Yes, I have all of this tracked and we'll bring this back at 5:30.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks for this, and I'm sure there'll be some other stuff when we come back 5:30. But I have a question about, we have, there's this multiple requests related to insurance increases from various departments. And I mean, do we have a, we have to pay those, right? I mean, is there's not really these requests? I guess, I guess the various departments could just lower their, you know, their funding for other parts of what they do to make up for that. But I mean, there's, it appears to be almost $200,000 in requests for, you know, if I aggregate all the insurance increase requests, am I somewhat accurate on that? And is that something we need to support or are we just assuming that that's something that's going to happen?
We recommended the insurance increases by and large for funding. Departments made cuts where they could. And then when they, when those cuts began to hamper their operations, they then submitted additional funding requests for those cost increases. So they've developed. So they've developed their baseline budgets with the assumption that they may not get these funds.
Okay, I appreciate that. I still want to have us, you know, impair the ability of our departments too much to, you know, because they're getting hit with these insurance increases, especially if it's not having to do with anything that they've done. So I think it's not an unreasonable request from those departments.
Okay. Anyone, any, I think we already got a lot for Alicia and everyone else put together in the next hour and a half. But is there anything else we need to send you with? Or do you feel like you've pretty much gotten everything you need from us for now?
I think that I've received good direction from your board and we'll compile it and return at 5:30 to confirm.
And I did see Sean's hand up. Quincy, where'd you go? I don't, I don't see it up now. Okay, I do now. Yes, Sean? Wait, you got, I see two of you. I see you're.
That's because, can, can the board hear me right now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Marie Essick calling from the, I'm calling in from the Public Defender Department. I was having difficulty getting on earlier, which is why mine says Sean Quincy. I just wanted to thank the board for considering our request on the Measure Z and then it's going to really work well with all the departments that we deal with and increase our efficiency incredibly. So, so again, I just wanted to express our gratitude for that consideration.
All right, thank you. And yeah, sorry about the confusion there. I'm going, I see Quincy and I see Quincy.
Thank you.
Been a long day. Thank you for, for that. All right, well, if there's no other direction that we are providing at this time, I guess this is where we continue the public hearing and come back at 5:30. We do have two closed session items, however. So, if you, after, let's take like a, mom, County Council Billingsley, first let's go and ask you, you know, what are we going in for in closed session? And can you also give me a potential time that you expect us to be in there?
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on two items. They're both existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.91. The first is the case of Garcia Guevara versus County of Humboldt, case number DR190798. And the second is North Coast Environmental Center at All versus County of Humboldt, case number CB2100518. I would estimate, guesstimate 45 minutes.
Okay. Well, first let me go to public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wants to comment on these items, you should have your hand up now by pressing star nine. You do not believe anyone's here to make those comments, so we will go back to the board. Okay, 45 minutes. Can we take like a, just like a 10 minute break before we go in there since we've already been in here a couple hours? So let's, how about 4:15, we'll go into closed session?
That sounds good, but will we have enough time to actually like run across the street and get a burrito or something between these?
Depends how fast, depends how fast you are.
Sure.
You know, it's, well, do you want to take, do you want to take like a longer break now? I mean, with others?
I prefer to take a shorter break now, like a five minute, just like in and out, and then that'd be great.
Okay, let's say five. Let's come back at 4:10 in closed session. Can you report out a closed session?
Yes, Chair. On item E1, there's no reportable action. And on E2, the board will have to briefly reconvene for an update. And we'll report out after that.
All right, thank you. And now I have a process question since we're starting our second half of the budget hearing for the day. CAO Nelson, is this, is it best to go out to public comment first or do you run through the presentation again? We only do this once a year, so.
Chair Bass, we will run through the presentation again and point out what modifications we have made, Bass, based on your prior direction from earlier in the day.
Lovely. Thank you very much. You got Supervisor move now. All right, so Alicia, can I turn this over to you?
Thank you, Chair Bass and members of the board. I'm Alicia Hayes, Assistant CAO in the County Administrative Office. I'm going to share my screen. I'll go through this presentation fairly quickly, at least the first portion of it as we did here this afternoon. This is the second session of public hearings on the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. And today, as I said, is the second hearing and is the final opportunity for public input and for board deliberation before we return to your board on June 29th with budget adoption. Today, the proposed budget or spending plan before your board is $505.63 million. This represents an increase of 40.1 million or 9% than the current year's adopted budget. Significant portion of this increase is due to large projects that will take place to address prior year storm damage and for the planning and construction of the Manila and Humboldt Bay Trails. Overall, the largest portion of the budget is allocated to Health and Human Services with Public Works and Law and Justice coming in second and third. In the general fund, projected revenues for fiscal year 2122 are 148.6 million, which is an increase of 1.7 million or 1% from the current fiscal year. This revenue increase is primarily due to increased building permit fees, property, and sales taxes. In fiscal year 2122, the general fund will utilize 6.8 million and other financing sources, including 2.2 million in the use of fund balance in order to present your board with a balanced budget. Over half or 89.9 million of the total general fund revenues, which includes 12.5 million of Measure Z funding, is available to be spent on your board's priorities and projects. The fiscal year 2122 budget proposes that your board allocate 155.5 million in general fund expenditures, a decrease of 1.4 million or 1% from the current fiscal year. This decrease is primarily due to the completion of large projects and the reclassification of expenditures to other financing sources. The fiscal year 2021 budget was adopted with estimated revenues of 9.47 million for Measure Z. Due to better than projected revenue actuals, staff are able to allocate an additional 1.622 million. And contained on this sheet, on this slide here, is the recommendation from staff to fund all of the projects that were previously approved but unfunded due to limitations. And to also fund all previous applications that were funded, however reduced, in order to allow for the maximum amount of applications to be funded as possible. In total, that's 1.6 million in additional funding allocations. Contained on this slide is the ongoing funding request totaling $2 million that staff have received from county departments and outside agencies. This slide details the one-time costs totaling 5.7 million that staff have received from county departments and outside agencies. In total, the county administrative officer is recommending 5.3 million in funding requests, primarily for one-time requests as detailed in your board's packet. Moving along to this afternoon's deliberations, your board did determine you were agreeable to approving staff recommendations with the following modifications to the Measure Z funding applications. You would fund the City of Trinidad application for a halftime deputy in the amount of $79,908. And you would reduce the sheriff's body worn camera application by $56,481, with the remaining balance being made up through funds that were unexpended in staff's recommendations. You also approved a number of additional funding requests that have been received over the budget period. The first lump of that is been determined by our office to use fund balance as the best source of funding. Included in that is $200,000 for ballot polling, $3,708 for the Law Library, $150,150 for Zone Haven evacuation platform, and $250,000 for probation's water damage at the main building. Use of contingencies, which will total 348,491, will be utilized to fund the grand jury's rent of the Eureka Vets Hall in the amount of $15,600, $171,828 for two mental health correctional deputies, and $176,663 for two code compliance officers. Finally, deferred maintenance funds earmarked a number of years ago, a couple of years ago, will be utilized for updates to the Clark Street facility in the amount of $358,185. In total, your board is recommending additional allocations of $1,326,134. In addition to that, your board discussed application or request, excuse me, for additional funding that could be funded through ARPA. Included in that was $400,000 for the North Humboldt Recreational Park District, also known as the Arcata Pool, $692,500 for the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau, $53,000 for general relief client debt relief, and also to evaluate first five childcare services. These items will come back to your board in July when staff return with a more formalized budget. In addition, your board asked for staff to return with more information and funding options for the $6 million request from the Harvard District to support a marine terminal. And with that, I will conclude this board report for you to take public comment and additional deliberations.
Thank you, Alicia. You guys were busy during the break. So are there any questions for staff now or we will just go straight out? I think we do have at least one member of the public, but I'll stick with the board for right now. Supervisor Wilson, I do see you have a hand up. Can you turn your microphone off or on?
I can do that now. Thanks. Guilty of that multiple times today. So the convention and Visitors Bureau sent us their request and it kind of had two tiers to it. It kind of had one that was less than the one that's on here now. And I was just kind of wondering, we didn't really have a discussion about that. It's just, we just said, oh, something, yeah, the convention and Visitors Bureau is interested in some funding. And so I was just wondering, do you, do you guys, do you evaluate what they had put forward? And do you have any, the staff have any thoughts on their proposal from the convention and Visitors Bureau?
So they did submit a formal request. That was the amount that was detailed on this slide. And you may recall that they came to your board a few months ago and delivered a staff report detailing out their funding shortages. So we presented their baseline request.
Okay, and then there was a request or we had, we've received some correspondence about some sort of art. What was that? Can you guys can remind me that? I just, I was just bringing that up with, from our artist community about, and I'm just kind of wondering, maybe someone can remind me of that because I just, I'm just pulling it up. Supervisor Bushnell, please remind us.
I think it was to supplement the art, artist community as they have been shuttered since COVID entirely, is the communication I got.
Yeah, and, uh-oh.
Isn't, isn't that part of a conversation, isn't the ARPA coming or whatever still coming back to us for additional conversation, Amy?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bass. Both Visitors Bureau conversation and the artist request, those can all be deliberated on in the future July agenda item. So we would obviously include requests as they're coming in. I believe we will probably hear from other community partners on the need for funding. And so your board can have some of those discussions. And with the Visitors Bureau, your, this budget is also allocating funds for Lou Edwards so we can do some research on the ballot measures. And recall that one of those ballot measures is for the increase in transient occupancy tax to campgrounds and RV parks. And so that will also be, the ARPA funds will likely, I view those as getting the Visitors Bureau through one year potentially. And then, and then if your board or the community is supportive of the TOT change, then, then those funds would be used to help the Visitors Bureau as well.
Oh, through the chair. Thank you for the reminder. That's what it was, is basically a request for TOT funding. Okay, I just wanted to, it's, I see. Thanks, I appreciate that.
And I saw Rex's hand and I see Michelle's up, so I'm not sure which one of you want to.
Rex was first.
Well, I've got, I've got a couple. I just, Visitors Convention Bureau, I mean, we get a great bang for our buck on them. I think we're in the New York Times again this last weekend, once or twice. I mean, they get us out there. And now that the funding Eureka is more focused on their, more, more, I guess locally, we're the ones that have to reach out, but the, you know, and then, and hopefully work with them to put heads in bed. So I think, you know, lodging alliances and the TOT, the folks are doing, I think we can probably get support from them for this because, I mean, look at that, 2.6 million the Lodging Alliance just gave for the Skywalk. So I think that's, the only other thing is, is I wanted to thank the sheriff earlier for taking the money out of his forfeiture monies. But I also know that we're trying to get those online as soon as possible, mainly for the, our people's protection and things like that. So can we make sure that somehow, whatever we do, I'll make a motion, whatever, that we actually get him paid so he can get those things ordered in the first quarter? Because I think for the body worn cameras, I mean, I don't know, I, so we move forward with that. So, because that's on, that's on that other set we're going to go back to in July. And I, I think, I'd like to see that moved to the regular. I don't think that was as big a discussion.
Through the chair, body worn cameras are part of the Measure Z requests and those budget appropriations will be available as of July 1. So as, as soon as, as you end up the budget and the year turns over, the sheriff.
I thought I saw them on the Visitors Convention Bureau list. Didn't I see them at the bottom?
No, it's on the Measure Z.
No, I'm talking on the slide here. Okay.
Yeah, no.
Michelle?
I wanted to ask about the $200,000 for the ballot polling. That is for a number of items, not one specific. Can I confirm that? Thank you.
CAO?
Yes, that is for three ballot measures, yes. The excise tax, the vehicle abatement, and TOT, the exploration of all three of those.
And you probably said that, and I'm sorry, Amy, I was trying to absorb all of it earlier.
Okay, any other questions on what we just got? Okay, we can, we'll go out for the public comment. I see one hand up. Again, if you are wanting to comment and you're in the public on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once you're on the phone, turn off your volume on your, your video because it gets confusing because there is a time delay. And so you might miss your opportunity to speak if you're watching us and not listening to the phone. So with that, we still just have one and that's the last four digits of 0018. And press star six to unmute and you will have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, it's Sandra Heseltine, Film Commissioner for Humboldt County. And I just wanted to give you guys a little update. I know tomorrow I'll be presenting it with, for about 10 minutes about the film commission, but as you guys are going over budget. but as you guys are going over budget, I just wanted to let you know. First of all, thank you for our funding for the past 10 years, since I've been the Executive Director of Film Commission. You know, our office is appointed by the Board of Supervisors to represent both Humboldt and then Delmar County. And every time I come to any of these sessions and listen, I don't envy you guys. I always think about what a hard job you all have, you know, between staff and, and all of you supervisors of allocating this money in all the different departments that all seem to need something. It's, it's definitely a difficult task. So, you know, kudos to all of you for, for doing this every year. We are in desperate need of some budgetary relief. We have a few different things that are basically, as of July 1st, will be missing about $200,000 in our office over the past year. Our, our office is only funded for $225,000 a year, and that's like the most we've ever been funded. So you can see, it's like we've almost skipped a whole year in funding. And some of that is, we haven't been able to get our invoices paid with the Audit and Control Office. And also HLA skipped us last year because of COVID, and now they've dropped from $60,000 to $40,000, and some other smaller funders have also dropped. We've had to cut spending, we have some reserve for paychecks, but at some point, you know, if this continues, that won't work either. And we put our office first for needs for the past 10 years, but now we need to make some changes, and our staff needs, actually, need to, are our office needs. Our staff has no retirement, we're underpaid, we're understaffed. And we don't really, you know, going into this next fiscal year, really won't have money for the marketing part, component of our job besides being the boots on the ground when productions do come here. So, and now we have to move, and our rest to be raised. So that's kind of just the grim version of what we're, what we're going to. But I'll tell you the, the happy stuff tomorrow when I present.
All right, thank you, Cassandra. I do appreciate that you called in, and, and I'm sorry about the confusion when you tried to call earlier today.
That's all right. My brain couldn't handle it, but I got it, I got it now.
Okay, all right, we'll see you tomorrow, and thank you.
All right.
Okay, so next we have two, two more hands up. Again, you'll have, when you're at two and a half minutes, you're going to hear a beep, and that's telling you you have 30 seconds to wrap up. I didn't tell you guys on the second half here. So if you have the last four digits of 7386, press star six to unmute. 7386, there you go, welcome.
Good evening, supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to address your board. This is Mary Ann Hanson, the Executive Director of First Five Humboldt. I just want to begin with thanks to the CAO's office for their hard work and their clarity in their presentation. And I just want to say that I'm looking forward to attending your board's conversation on the allocation of American Rescue Funds at a future date with an eye towards prevention and how those funds can be used to support young children and their families. Because, as you know, First Five Humboldt believes that the strength of our community is powerfully linked to the health of our youngest residents. So thanks for the opportunity to make a comment, and good luck with your deliberations.
And thank you, Mary Ann. And we have one more speaker, and that has the last four digits of 6459.
Yes, good evening, supervisors. This is Katrin Holman, I'm calling from the Fifth District. And I was calling in support of the funding request from the City of Trinidad. And I see that it has already been taken care of. So thank you to the sheriff and everyone for making it happen. The presence of this deputy sheriff is very important in Trinidad. Trinidad had seen a very big increase in break-ins and opportunity crimes. So I really appreciate it. And also the, the, having a deputy in the city helps us neighbors in, in the greater unincorporated Trinidad area, because they all go into our calls. So very much appreciated. Thank you very much. Anytime you can support our sheriff, please do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There are no other hands up. So we're going to close the public comment portion of this hearing and come back to the board for our deliberation and hopefully moving forward with something. Any supervisors have additional thoughts, concerns, thumbs up on what came back to us? Supervisor Madron, give me a thumbs up. Supervisor Wilson? He's doing five hands, five fingers, there.
Yeah, I was just wondering, did, did we, was, was, did, did it get added the, the mental health deputies or support? Okay.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that was, yeah, yeah, everything, let's, I mean, you know, we're going to come back and do this again, so. It, it's an iterative process.
Right, and before I go to the CAO, I have to say, I do see one hand up, except we did, I did officially close the public comment portion of the hearing. So I apologize if you missed that, that's part of the problem of waiting to, because of the time delay, so I do apologize. Yes, CAO Nielsen?
I, I just want to clarify about the iterative process. So the next step in this process is for your boards to make a motion to modify the proposed budget. And then what happens is we bring that budget back to you on, on June 29th, because the fiscal year starts on July 1st. So this is, this is the opportunity to make changes.
Thank you. So I'm asking, I'm looking to see if anyone, Supervisor Wilson?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we move forward the budget process as proposed by our board and, and reflected in staff's comments today.
And bring it back on the 29th for adoption?
And bring it back on the 29th for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is that appropriate, CAO Nielsen? Or Miss Hayes, is that enough for what you need? And any further discussion by the board?
Only that one, I mean by iteration, I mean, we come back in quarterly adjustments to this as well. And so, I mean, this is a planning document. We use this to plan our budgeting and spending and, and, and income, and it gets adjusted, so I, I think it's, and I haven't done my thank you to staff for all the hard work that's been done on this. Both CAO and Deputy CAO and everybody else in that office, and all of the department heads and their staff for, you know, participating in this process and the public as well. I, we're, this is, we're doing our best here, so thanks.
Supervisor Madron, did you have your hand up?
No, I was actually just trying to put up the clapping hands thing, but all we have is a raised hand, so. Kudos to staff, thank you so much for guiding us through this process.
Is that the sound of one hand clapping?
Well, I, you know, I think as we're thanking, also thanking the staff, well, the entire team and all the department heads and everyone to, to work, you know, trying to pull it all together. This has not been a normal year where we actually don't have some of the information we would normally want to have when we're doing, going through this process. So it's been pretty, I think, impressive that as many things could be pulled together, given the amount of information we may still be lacking. So I really do appreciate that. And anyone else care for a comment before we ask Ryan for the roll call vote? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. I just really want to express my sincere gratitude to Amy and her team. Budget is a really hard thing for a brand-new supervisor, and understanding it, as you could tell today by all my questions. And I just really, really appreciate your willingness, even at the stupid questions, and to really help me catch up. Thanks so much.
There are no stupid questions.
Well, when you have the answers and the person's asking it, but, thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Um, yeah, you know, go figure that pandemic would create such a huge economic return. But, you know, it's important to remember that not everybody's shared equally in what has occurred here. We certainly, as a county, have benefited from all the unemployment money, the stimulus money, and now the ARPA money and other things that have gone into the economy that has got people spending all kinds of money on fixing their homes and doing whatever. And, and, you know, so sales taxes are up, property taxes up because of the demand for coastal property that's not burning up. But there are many in our community that have not gotten a lot of help or limited help. The restaurants and, and many small businesses have really been so severely impacted. I just wanted to put a plug in for, when we're looking at the ARPA funds, if there is a way to really think about what businesses and folks in the community really have not been made whole. As a Board of Supervisors, our job was easier this year because we had increased revenues, right? So it gave us a chance to put some money into some really good places. But I just want to make sure that we keep this in mind, and I'm sure that the staff are already on board with this. They've done a lot of work to help these businesses through the pandemic. But I just want to make sure we realize that there's still a lot of people that are really hurting out there, a lot of small businesses, so just putting in a plug, thank you.
All right, well, you know, the hands up. Ryan, would you, please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, it passes 5-0.
So we will close our public hearing. And now I'm going to refer to County Council Billingsley regarding that closed session. We're going back, you say?
Yes, Chair, back on item E2.
All right. How about, and then we'll be, well, let's go straight there, because hopefully it won't take that. How long do you think it's going to take, Jefferson?
I'll estimate 10 minutes.
Okay, all right, let's go straight into that, so we can eventually let everybody go home.
Yes, Chair.
County Council Billingsley, may we have a report out of closed session?
Thank you, Chair. On item E2, there's no reportable action.
All right, well, thank you, and we will see all of you tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock.